Good evening. Called to order this April fifteenth meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
President.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant Arms and I is Lieutenant TC Hart, and it's Lieutenant's first meeting with us. Welcome. Glad to have you. May we have item H1, please?
Item H1, resolution honoring the 2019 City of Winston-Salem University graduates. Whereas there are 20 city residents who have successfully completed City of Winston-Salem University. Jean Alsop, Bonnie Burnett, Shakira B. Bethay, Artenia H. Boyce, Kanika Brown, Money Caldwell Cannon, Joe Cassidy, Mackenzie Cates Allen, Mary Clark Jackson, Linda B. Hill, Benjamin K. Hodge, LaShawn Nicole Howard, Sandra Keeney, Jaquay Perkins, Santiakos Ramos, George S. Red the Fourth, Philip Skipper, Melissa Vickers, Pam C. Webb, Terri Jewell. And whereas the 12-week coursework has included over 30 hours covering 19 city departments and divisions, completing a ride along with either the Winston-Salem Fire Department or the Winston-Salem Police Department, attending at least one city council or committee meeting, participating in a tour of one of the following: 2014 Bonbus Tour, the Elidge Wastewater Treatment Plant, Haynes Mill Landfield or City Link, and completing a budget project. And whereas the dedication of all 20 graduates has resulted in a better understanding and appreciation of city government and has given them the resources to better serve their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve honoring the aforementioned 2019 City of Winston-Salem University graduates and wish them much success in their future as community leaders.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Or vote, I guess you could vote aye. Guess that's gonna be up there. So we'll vote yes, or anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous, obviously. And so may I ask all of our graduates to stand up, please, here.
Here.
We're delighted that you took part in this program, 10 weeks. Congratulate Ed McNeil and Sue Spainhauer for the hard work that they do making it together, mostly Sue. Folks were very carefully chosen from a big pool of applicants here, so I hope you enjoyed it, hope you learned from it, and I hope you'll be good ambassadors for the City of Winston-Salem. When you hear people ask questions, you're now in a position to answer those for us. So thank you for participating. Councilmember Burke.
I was gonna ask one question. How many of you feel better about being involved with city government now that you're graduates of this university?
There you go. All right. Councilmember Adams?
My question was similar to the Mayor Protem, but just as the mayor said, you now can help the citizens of Winston-Salem be better. You know, I know that like we say all the time, people think this deal is like Burger King, but it's not. That there's a process, and I bet you were just as surprised as anybody else would be, except that you went through the program. When I first came on the board, we didn't, I mean, we might've had 20 people, but it didn't seem like we had 20 people each time. But I look at you and I go 20 times 20 times 20 times 20, that you now have an opportunity to do just like us. You get to talk to the citizens and answer questions and be a go-to person when stuff is wrong, you know? So again, I thank you for doing this, and I really hope that you can help to educate and inspire the rest of the City of Winston-Salem that government is slow, government is a process, but when we all work together, we can get a lot of things done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh?
There are two aspects of this program that I really like, and the first is that I think after going through this, you have a much better understanding of what city employees do. The jobs that a lot of these folks do are really hard, and I think it really helps you appreciate that fact. The other thing is it helps us build a bench. We have somewhere around 37 boards and commissions, and we're always looking for people who are aware and plugged in to serve on those boards to help us out. So you guys are now prime candidates. Don't be surprised if the mayor reaches out and asks you to serve on one of those boards. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say very briefly, thank each and every one of you for putting in the time. Thank you for putting in the work. Many of you I know individually, others who I don't, but all of you individually, thank you for what you do to help our city to be a better place to live, work, and relax.
Councilmembers, without objection, I'd like to add an item to the agenda tonight. It will be a budget amendment that was, we voted on at the committee of the whole. Any objection to adding that, adding that to the?
No.
Agenda? Very good. That'll be showing up as item G2 on our agenda. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of the council will take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously approved by committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on the consent agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed and considered. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, members of the public can always get copies of our agenda as well as videos of previous meetings by going to our website and simply click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to remove from the consent?
C1.
All right. Is there a motion on the balance?
Move for approval of the balance.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll go to item C1.
Item C1, resolution establishing an African-American Heritage Action Initiative Committee, recommended by Community Housing Development General Government Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem, and council members, and my neighbors. This initiative is transformative in its intent. It is to bring respect and healing to people in this community whose history has not been recorded, but whose contributions have been significant. Over the years of growing up here, I've seen what we have lost through desegregation. It was never integration. But now is a time when we can bring back the stories, the love, the respect, the energy that so many people put into making this community vibrant for many, many years. So I thank you, council members, for your courage to take this step. I really don't know of too many communities who would say they're strong enough to say yes, let's give the voice to the stories of the people who have been systemically denied their right to fully participate in this great city and in America. So I thank you for that. And Mayor, I do move for approval.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second for approval of item C1. Any discussion?
No, I was gonna say something.
Councilmember Burke?
I was very happy when Councilwoman Cipio initiated this, and I thought it was something needed. And we have been on this council hitting and missing, even asking some of the staff to assist us to make our history more known, but it was put on the back burner, had something else come in before yet. And when I read what you wanted to do with this city being a historical place and the role that minorities played for the history in this city and with the history, I want to say thanks to you, being new, stepping out and saying, why not? And I appreciate it.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilwoman Cipio. Council will now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following. There's an item related to a street closing. There's an amendment to the project budget ordinance. There are three items related to reappointments to boards and commissions at the public comment period, and we won't have a need for a closed session following the general session. The street closing is listed as a public hearing, and when this public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. Anyone who wishes to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. The public comment period is a time set aside once per month for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. And when the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for comment, and this period is limited to three minutes. May we have item number one, please?
Item G1, public hearing on petition to close and abandon a portion of Primrose Lane located off of Mashi Drive.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed street closing? Yes, sir?
Counsel?
Please come forward to the mic and give your name and address for record, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am John Joseph Strezzik Jr. I was not aware I was, had to speak, or?
You don't?
I, well, I didn't know if anyone else was to speak for or against.
No one has signed up?
I just wanted to say I'm present if?
Your questions? Good. Thank you for being here, then. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and this is in the Councilmember McIntosh's ward. It did come out of public work, so.
I'll defer.
Okay. Councilmember McIntosh?
I don't have paperwork on it. Do I just make a motion to approve?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? All right. Those of you in favor of this motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion's approved unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. Item G2?
Excuse me?
Yes?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, may I just thank you?
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Quick question?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
When does it go into effect?
The staff will get with you right there, sir.
I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Item G2.
Item G2, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2018-2019.
You know, this is an item we just dealt with just a few minutes ago in the committee of the whole. I entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Councilmember Clark?
I'll be very brief. I was the only one in the committee who voted against it. I cannot in good conscience spend $1.7 million of taxpayers' money to buy a building that we do not need and tear it down. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
That's not coming up.
Did someone push the motion buttons?
Yeah, I just did.
Okay, there we go. Now, anyone, please vote in favor, vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Well, that's showing unanimous, Mr. Clark. Did you?
I may not have voted or something. I'm against it, so.
Well, the record shows this motion passes seven to one with Councilmember Clark voting in the negative on that. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the Creative Corridors Design Review Committee. Gregory Errett term expiring July 2022.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. We have to move.
Second. Yes, ma'am. And a second?
Oh, I see Mr. Bessie.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item G4?
Item G4, mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the NWBE Advisory Committee. Ethel Witt, term expiring December 2020.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And item G5?
Item G5, confirmation of Forsyth County Board of Commissioners reapportment of Clarence R. Lambie to the City County Planning Board.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, council. We'll now go to the public comment period, which we set aside 30 minutes to hear from citizens on matters germane to city government. First person signed up was Mackenzie Cates Allen. If you would, please, each give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Absolutely. My name is Mackenzie Cates Allen. Address is 3490 Priggin Ridge Drive, Winston-Salem. And dear esteemed council members, staff, and guests, good evening. My name is Mackenzie Cates Allen, and I serve as the president of Winston-Salem Ambassadors. We are the nonprofit in the center of the city, knowing as much as possible as what is going on, so that we can then disseminate that to as many people as possible. We connect with people on an individual basis to plug them into Winston-Salem in hopes that we will retain them and they will become or stay satisfied taxpayers and citizens. We have found a special niche for the people who are newer to our city, but as our mission is to increase awareness of Winston-Salem, we relate to everyone and have helped people who have been here for 20 years or more. Our immediate goals are to, one, create a welcome center in the heart of downtown so that anyone may walk in, whether they are visiting for a convention or have just moved to the city, to be helped, and to, two, have a plethora of ambassadors to be able to assist folks. As you know, we have a city of over 245,000 people, and we seek as much help as possible representing all the amazing things that are happening as a whole. The needs we see being met by the center and the ambassadors are primarily that, one, our visitor center is located away from the main foot traffic of downtown, and that their goals are not necessarily face-to-face interaction with people. Two, that other organizations who may exist are busy doing their mission-specific work. And three, that no one organization exists necessarily to sell the city as a whole without any bias or monetary gain. As I learned, the city government exists to serve its citizens, and others are in the business of selling things or memberships, not necessarily working with folks to get them to fall in love and stay in love with this great city. But rather than talk about why our organization is the right thing to exist by making people feel welcome, I want to speak tonight about how we can positively affect economic development, which is so important. As just demonstrated by a meeting with one of our top two employers in the city, the Winston-Salem Ambassadors can help companies with recruiting and, more importantly, with retention. We aim to be the one-stop central hub for all things Winston-Salem, whether it's for someone trying to find out their first step to opening a business, a family member visiting someone who lives here, or an investor looking to invest millions in our economy, which, incidentally, we've already helped achieve. Being so visible and prominent, we will also be able to compile data on everyone that we interact with, and we are more than happy to share those numbers with anyone who has any interest in those. I would love to speak with you all individually about our organization, and we have submitted to the city, so I would humbly ask that you consider us for funding at any amount. And it is just a great pleasure to be a part of this city, and I want to thank you all for your hard work and your service, and thank you for allowing me to be a great part of this city. I love it so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, and we thank you for the work of the ambassadors and do a great job for our community.
Thank you, sir.
Does my time start when I get here or after?
We'll wait on it, Harold.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. I'm greatly offended at this city. I've been here all my life. How many have been here all their life? Show of hands. It's a great city. Great. How many here were in 1967? It wasn't too nice, was it? Young people can go on Google and Google it, see what happened here. These things, we don't need a wedge to draw between our community. We've been pretty peaceful, but things are going on, and I'm down on the street, and most of y'all know that. People are not happy. Now, the word Dixie, are we gonna get rid of Dixie Broadway Street? Dixie Crystal Sugar? These things offend people. It's been here all of our life, no matter what our color. In '67, there's burnt-down cuttings here in this town because they were not happy. The National Guard was called out. There's a sign with the Black Panthers. They had some good, but they didn't have some good, too, but they got a plaque. And this offends a lot of people in this town, no matter what the color. I want to tell you a little story about an exchange student we had from Berlin, Germany, about six years ago. She was 18 at the time, 17, and I asked her, I said, "Did you ever go over to the place where they burn all the Jews at?" I don't like that word, but she said, "Did that really happen? Did it really happen?" I don't think a soul in this room right here will deny that it did happen, but they're teaching their kids to erase history because they're ashamed of what hap- what happened here today, yesterday, 100 years ago. It happened. We cannot erase history, but we have to understand why we don't want to do it again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Everybody doing 12, I say 1209 Northeast 21st Street. And how you, Alan Joy? Alan Joy, I actually look at the proposal on Brothers and Sisters Rising, I'm the president of Brothers and Sisters Rising organization. Mayor, you've been supporting us for many years now. A good, a good job. The way I'm coming down here today, we want to know, stop the homeless population, and we want you to stop the Cleveland Avenue homes and the high-rise up in there that comes. Y'all want to make Cunningham houses. We don't need no Cunningham house. We have rights in the community as being hoods, hoods represented. We got, we can party units. The house to give us opportunity to have houses. I worked with Mr. Marshall. I've been supporting with the government, Governor Hunt, you, Mayor Allen, Dave Pleyer, Senator Horton, everything. I ain't never had the want for nothing to come down here, but today, when Mr. Marshall Waters is a legend in our community, everything else, because he was a part of the group, everything else coming. And Mr. Marshall fed a lot of people, did a lot of things in the community, and now I'm standing because he died on me. And Governor Hunt and Richard Horton, Daddy, Ann Horton, and all this stuff, but I'm just saying, y'all never asked us in the community, I'm coming for a grant because I'm legal, everything else, I can do that, and I don't want my, I don't want the kids, I got 100 and thou- 100, 1,005, I grew up with these kids. I've been in this community, all in this community, raised in the cover. It's hard out there, everything else, but it's finna be a movement, everything else, and we gotta start, change. And Mayor, while I'm here, they got a liminaudity here. It done cleared out a whole street because they want to kill a cop. Everything, or two cops at that. And we cleared the neighborhood off, sending kids for Easter to your grandma. I don't care what we did, but we cleared, cleared them out because that's not our problem. They had killed them, man, and for, they got 1.5 million dope here, everything else, and we don't want to, Mayor, we don't want nothing to part of that. Everything else, you know them boys, all the cops that we know, know everybody in the community, know all the, all the, y'all took the good cop. You have 40 cops, and you, the city is not paying them. They, they'll make the 700, maybe, we looked at, did the research about the drug elimination grant.
Ms. Rickard, your time is up. Could you kind of summarize?
What's your opinion, Julie? I mean, what's your, I mean, what's your opinion? That's what to come about the organization.
Well, I certainly looked over those documents, and I think you're looking for a grant, and certainly will give you every consideration for them, and I'd love to maybe spend more time individually with you on those, Ms. Rickard.
Okay.
All right. If you would let Mr. Garrity over here have your phone number so I can follow back up with you, if you would, please.
Okay, because I'm keep coming back down. Keep on coming. Next, next time I'm coming, I'm up for the whole row of ghetto people.
Okay.
Everything else, so I'm letting you know, help me.
Thank you, Ms. Rickard. Joseph Suggs, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Usef Suggs L., P.O. Box 17506, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I'd like to applaud those who graduated from the city of Winston-Salem University, and I hope that they gained a great experience in understanding that, as the young lady who introduced her nonprofit up here, that the role of government is to serve the people. And sometimes we have to be reminded of that, you know? Nature reminds us of certain things, you know? We're reminded of life when we see the sun rise, and you get a chance to make it up all over again. Lee, when I came here last time, I asked you in a request to give me the oaths of all the elected officials that are up here, and I did receive it, and I appreciate it. I didn't receive yours within that, because when I read Article 6 of the United States Constitution, it tells us that you've taken an oath, and that oath that you have taken, you've taken to uphold the constitutional rights of the people. That oath that you have taken, I don't care how many codes you quote, I don't care how many statutes you quote, that oath that you have taken is to the North Carolina Constitution. And when I do read within the city codes and the municipal codes and all the ordinances, it talks about the moral and the integrity, like when it comes to substandard living and housing. And we look at some of the things that's been passed by this council, and you have to ask yourself, where is the moral aspect within that that you have taken an oath to? It's easy to say we're for the people. Sounds good. It's easy to troll Facebook and, you know, get other people to say certain things, to try to cause something, and throw a like and a heart up, and that's real good. But the reality of it is, with the oath that you have taken, you've made decisions that affect people's lives. You hear it day in and day out. You can't get two or three people up here and say, "I'm for the people. See how I'm for the people." The people have been screaming for years. This is a notice that you've taken the oath, and we're gonna remind you of that, because when you've taken that oath, remember, it's for the people, not against the will of the people at your discretion. It's hard to make decisions sometimes, but remember, it's for the people, and that's what you've taken your oath to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suggs. Anyone else like to be heard during public comment?
Dorian Allen, president of Action For Now, P.O. Box 284, 27102. I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse here, so it's gonna be very brief, but you just heard Ms. Smith say, "It's getting ready to be a movement," and trust me, you all see it coming, because it is real.
because it is real. I do want to say this, thank you, and I do believe in giving credit where credit is due. Thank you, Mr. Clark. That makes no sense at all about buying the building that you're gonna tear down to turn around and lease space from. You know, Winston-Salem used to be ranked number one in the whole state as far as cities. Now I think we're somewhere between five and six in the state, okay? And all I can say is that, as Mr. Suggs just indicated, every last one of you all took a oath, and you, we don't want to hear all this, "I'm for the people" when it comes election time, because people, they may have had a short memory, but guess what? They've got a very long memory now. And the memory is the fact that when they needed you, you all weren't there, at least the majority of you were not there. And as I said before, I don't mind if you don't like this or you don't like that, that's not your position to like anything. Your position is to step forward and be there for the people, put the people first, go with the welfare of the people, not your personal, not to go along, to get along with everybody else. We've got a serious problem here, and just like anything else, this has been my home, my family's home since 1897. My grandfather helped build some of the first buildings with Mr. R.J. Reynolds personally, okay? But this is the thing about it, I don't care how long you've been here, whether you've made Winston-Salem your home or not, when you took that oath, see, it may not mean too much once you get in and start doing things and using your position to do what you want, and I'm not talking to everyone right now, I'm talking to very specific individuals. Trust me, what's done in dark will come to light. If you can't be for the people, then at this point, it's just too late, you know? Affordable homes, where are they? We've been talking about it since 1990. Where are they? There's only been two people sitting on this, this board right here, sitting on this council for over forty years, pretty much, or at least that's been a part of the city council. I'm not going to bite my tongue, and I'm not going to step backwards, we're going to move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard during public comment? Harold, you've already had your shot.
I have a minute left.
Okay, I'll give it to you.
I forgot to say one thing. I got a phone call a couple weeks ago from elementary school here in Winston. They were very in dire need of underwear. Think about that, for kids at school. We all have accidents, and older we get, we have more accidents, but as small kids, and they get to school, and they have accidents. There's no underwear for them, there's no blue jeans to change into, and we're worried about other things in this town, but this is Winston-Salem, our kids, no matter what the color is. I finally got them hooked up with Sunnyside Men's, and we got them some clothes over, but this is things we need to look at instead of all the other smoke screens that's going on. Just want to tell you, I forgot to tell that a while ago.
All right, thank you, Harold. Anyone else during public comment? I'm sorry, ma'am, you used your time, I apologize. All right, I'll close the public comment period. We do have a need to go into closed session. I recognize Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to, one, North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A5, to provide instructions to staff in negotiating the purchase price and other material contract terms for the purchase of properties owned by Wayne and Beverly Branch located at 3227 and 3231 New Greensboro Road, as well as pasture land on the north side of New Greensboro Road and the south sides of Business 40 and the Norfolk Southern Railroad for further protection of Salem Lake Park and the surrounding lake. And, two, North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3, to consult with and provide direction to the city attorney and to protect the attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Yeah, well.
We need a couple more, need to have a motion to end closed session.
Move for approval.
Councilmember Adams moves approval to end closed session, accepted by Councilmember Larson. Need one more person out here.
She's right behind me.
I know, we need one more, though.
Get back in here.
Get us, get us the fourth person out here.
I'm in fourth vote, come on here.
All in favor of ending closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, now we're out of closed session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for approval.
Motion for Councilmember Adams, accepted by Councilmember Larson to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we adjourn.
Excellent, thank you.